Przez 6 czerwca 2011 Goshen, Nowy Miasto, Jorku. Sesja i zgromadzenia prac rady. Wchodzimy 50 minut w tym spotkaniu. Co to za miasto? To jest tak?
You don't want to do it until you have some sense, a better sense of what kind of strategic value it is. I guess what I'd like to see in the best of all worlds is that by August 1, you've come to a determination as to whether or not I purchase it or not. This way, I'll hear from the Department of Transportation by then, and this way, everything sort of will come together.
Can we maybe the principal of this...
Will you tell us what...
Will you tell us what information you're looking for? It would be as helpful to as we can.
Well, number one, I'd like to know if it's available.
Yeah, okay.
Available, and how much?
Okay.
Because I think it might have strategic value to us, and I think our board would have to determine that.
Okay.
In the meantime, I need to draft a letter going along to Mr. Hessinger, saying, "Okay, we're in the process of doing this." And of course, August 1 is quite a way away, but I'd like to know. We're into this, you know, and... So I don't know, what about the rest of it? What are your questions? I mean, I don't want to create a problem, but I think this has... Because I think early on, I really do believe this, if I had been just positioning back whatever this was bought the first time, I might have talked to the board and said, "Gee, guys, this might have strategic value to us." And it was never offered to us, evidently.
According to the title report, it was acquired titled by D from... I'm gonna kill its name. Byus Yakov, Goshen Land Company LLC, on February 22, 2005.
Right. That's what you were talking about.
That's probably what you were referring to. So it was not... It didn't come out... And I don't know where Byus Yakov purchased it from. I don't know if that came out of Erie or not.
I think this must have sold long ago.
Yeah.
Long before that. And he might have been the second or third owner, I don't know. The railroad went out of business at 17A a long time ago.
Right, 16 to 17?
I'm sure the title company must have searched it back.
You would think so.
They would have to go back to the original. I mean, if from Erie...
You would hope they would.
They just threw the last owner, and they get the prior title company to indemnify them. You know, I'm just telling you what goes on. They should go back.
Absolutely.
I would hope their records...
They're not gonna insure something that they can't put their hands on.
Unless they get a letter of indemnification from the prior insurer. If I was somebody, yes.
Now, evidently, this thing when it was purchased, this whole property for M&amp;M Orange, they purchased the 20.4 acres, and the 1.7 acres, and along with this railroad bed all at one time.
I don't know.
I don't know that either.
I would... I don't think so.
It looks like... Well, the tax search shows that you have lot 5.11
Right.
And lot 70, which is this small strip.
Yes.
That's being assessed as one lot.
Okay.
So when he purchased 5.11, he probably purchased 70 at the same time.
Yes.
They probably went together since they're being assessed together. So it's 1D, the lots 5.11 and 70. So when he purchased 5.11, he purchased 70. And the town assesses that at the land at $50,000... Assess value land $50,700.
So please try.
And then it says total once all 700. Now, I'm not quite sure why you get a total, because I don't think there's any fruit property on it.
You know, as I'm looking at this, that railroad came down, and it's probably where it began. It went down to 17A, guys. That's why that 5.11 is there. This is not the Erie Railroad that went to Middletown. This is the Erie Railroad that went to Pine Island and all that out of that way. And so that's probably where it changed direction. That's where it goes out beyond Moroski's and the Houston and all those.
We don't want to make it difficult.
No.
It's not...
No, no, I don't think you are trying to...
Right, right, right.
But it looks like you tax it as one parcel.
It's a huge flag line.
Yes, right. That's true.
Huge!
It is a big flag line, you're right.
There are very long driveways one to the other. I'm about to have a long flag line down a very long driveway. But the fellows here on the board, if you go down toward the village, you're starting up at 5.11 to the town. You go down in these other ones, or the village. This goes all the way over almost to 17A.
This one's going up to the town?
This is going... No, this one's going into the town. Starts in the village.
No, no, that's not... Now, here's a loger.
See, he is private. He has gone this way into the village. You're going the opposite, right?
Here's a loger.
Loger versus... This is... That's going down.
No, no, this is the village down here, guys. I went over, look, this is village. This is McKewan property, right down here. At 17A. It goes out by Freehoofers and then turns here and goes up. And then goes up to 7... All the way back, cuts across Gibson Road, Houston Road, and all that.
And you ordered my property.
Yes, yeah. So this is the village. This is the town.
The village is down here. Yeah.
So this is the village down here. And I think you got...
You're right, it crosses into the village. I'm looking at the larger map. It crosses into the village and looks like it ends by Gibson Road.
Right.
So it looks like it runs from Gibson Road all the way up to lot 5.11.
Well, actually, it went from Gibson Road. It went beyond that. Went into all the way to Pine Island.
And this discussion stuff...
But the fact is, in terms of strategic value to us, it's properties over here that I think we need to understand the relativity of all this. So therefore, this lot 1.32, I don't know if that's landlocked or not, or if it doesn't have access from...
I'm just trying to wonder about that.
Yeah.
It was sold as one lot. So I guess I'm a little baffled as to why it would have been sold as one lot? If it's two separate lots, and since one of those lots was subject to the right of acquisition, why would it have been sold... Why wouldn't you sell 5.11 and 70 separately? And therefore, you could deal with the right of acquisition separately? But since it appears that title was consistently sold as one lot?
Evidently, the same people bought it in this 1.32. And this may be the only access to it somehow. I don't think so, because you've got the industrial park over here.
I can't figure out why the Erie has 5.11 to begin where they have that.
That's the part where it changes direction. That's where it should turn. So, yeah. So from my vantage point, I think if we just knew more about availability of that to the town.
I guess what you'd have to also do to value it is you'd have to separate 5.11 or 70 to figure out really what the value is. Because even the town's assessors are assessing it as one lot.
Well, here's where I'm thinking.
Right.
If in fact, this big lot, maybe it's 20 some odd acres, you know, if he can't get clear title to that, well, maybe he could get clear title of that if he donated 70 and 5.11 does.
I don't know how altruistic he is.
Okay, well...
But we are...
Okay, I'm just... But that's my question.
He's not that egalitarian a kind of guy. He wants to own himself. But he's gonna need access somehow to this big lot.
Well, he may have it already.
Well, let's see. If he has access to it from highway, county highway 31, then he's fine. If he doesn't have access to it, then arguably, he has perhaps an easement by prescription, even by necessity.
And then he would need that piece.
Then he'll need that.
He would need that piece. So even if the town said, "Well, if we want it, we'll buy it."
Might have to buy the whole thing.
I don't want to...
No, no, I'm just saying, if he has no other access, he's thirty-one.
I have the walk-in property. I guess what I'll do is... County Highway 31.
See, to me, if he has access to that 28 acre, wherever it is, then maybe it's something that... I think it would have value to the town of Goshen. And he would think about donating to us to get our...
I can't see...
Well, I guess if he donated, he'd want an easement over it.
For example?
He wanted to get...
He's gotta get it.
To get his property.
Well, no, I'm saying that he had access.
Yeah, please. Sure. Thanks, I'll get back to you. There's the property there.
It's not...
No, no, it's not.
The building's just over here.
Well, look, if this is something... I guess one thing you could do, I'm not quite sure, I can't imagine we'd cost that much, is inspire someone to appraise it. Well, I mean, Phil Buckholzer charged you $400 to appraise it. To appraise it.
Did you hear that?
We haven't appraised it as due tax search.
Right now.
Do you want to...
What he's got to say.
He wants to have the $400.
You're overpaying then. I know what Phil Buckholzer charges me. He charges me $400.
And here's where I'm at. I'm not trying to be a stick in the mud here and create a problem. But had the town of Goshen had an opportunity early on, we might very well have said, "Yes, we will." But since we were omitted in that opportunity, then I'd like to find out what the opportunity really is. And that's the purpose of it.
That's fine. I'm fine. So let's talk about the next step. So you want... What do you want from us? You want to know what we want to sell to you for? Or if it's for sale?
For sale. Or donation? Or does he... I really want to know, does he have access to that 28 acre?
Yeah, we have it behind us. Does he have access to the big lot?
No, no, to the big lot. Does he... I mean, I know he does...
Block 1.32.
I know he would, but if he has that from the industrial park or something else, then I think then...
Yeah, you can look at the larger map.
Dennis is going.
He uses map back.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, that's all right, hold on to it. I wanted to see if there was a road there from 1.32.
Where's the village?
The village is, I think, right here. See, here's town. So it's close to the road. Town line right there. See town? Town of Goshen. So I'm thinking that right over here is the RPA. And the reason I say that is because here's Bosse's, right? And Bosse's is in the village, I think.
No. The Bosse's is... If I'm wrong, then that's...
Bosse's is off Gibson Road.
Well, this is Gibson Road, right over here.
Well, that's the town.
Okay, this is all town.
This was the building you...
Look, right here, that's my property.
All right, so that's what I'm saying.
If you say it... Right, she doesn't convince me.
You tell you this...
Oh, we're getting more...
Here's...
Doug, you may want to move on to this end. We're getting oriented here. And I mean, some people think that you may be reversed in your thinking. This is where the village is. See, this is... If you place this against...
This is 31. This is 31 right here. This is Plesh Drive. This is going this way. The village is here.
Right, that's it.
No, he didn't.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You said it was down here.
You kept saying the village is here.
No, 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 no. This is...
This is Gibson Road.
This is town right here. This is village here.
No, no, no. See, that's my property right there. That's my house. Well, right here.
That's town.
Right, it's the town. So it's this. Right, you cross Gibson Road, and go out to Florida this way. This is it. It's just a reverse.
That's all I'm trying to say. When you looked at that, the village is here.
Same comments, always. Turned for the railroad, yeah, same thought. These questions get confusing. Right. I got my parents.
He would have made it, he would have made it.
Yeah, no, no. Again, it's the right turn. That's correct.
Okay, well, so where are we going from here? All right, so we agree that this entire section then is in the town of Goshen?
Yes, that's correct.
Yes, absolutely.
And we agree that it ends at Gibson Road?
Well, it would intersect with Gibson Road.
Intersect with Gibson Road. Well, as far as the portion that are...
I assume, yeah.
Would like to...
Get ownership from there.
Intersect with Gibson Road. This was easy, wasn't it?
Yeah. Neil, if you can imagine how confusing this was, nobody was here.
Exactly. Well, let's put this way. My partner came to me, he said, "Neil, I have a conflict on about 4:45." Okay.
And you said, "Are you kidding?"
So I said, "Okay, so I have about 20 minutes to learn all of this."
He owes you.
I assume we can do that discussion for nine o'clock, so I'm glad you're here.
If Allen was here, we'd just beat him up.
Sure.
If Allen was here, we would just beat him up.
You're doing stuff, it would be a nice...
Yeah.
Okay, so when you get that in, maybe just call, we'll put you back on.
All right, so you want to know if it's for sale?
Yes.
So how much?
Yes.
And are we going to assess for your own purposes? It's strategic important?
No, I think what the other thing we want to know is, does he have access to that 28 acre?
On his own.
Does he have access through another route down this road?
Okay. That would make things really easy.
Because if he has access from the industrial park or something else, then you know what?
Access, sale, how much?
Maybe something...
See, hopefully, no, just a hand, then we'll make...
Okay.
Neil, if you want to wait, she's making a copy of that.
Oh, sure, sure. Yeah, we just... That's a good map compared to this.
You know, just on the boards aware, that railroad bed, okay, that is also the railroad bed the county uses and the Georgia authority uses for the water and sewer line out of the jail. All the way to Florida.
But does it go... It doesn't go through this section?
No, on the other side it gets the road. But the thought always was, if in fact Florida and Groves and downtown Rockford, Kalaski High Height, this road, the county, was the rest of that. Okay, I'm just working out...
Well, I want to tell you some news that developer out there, and I'm not gonna say who, that's what he wanted to use.
Yes, and as you remember, Eddie, even Diana proposed a parallel road to 17 to alleviate traffic. This was it. Just so you're aware.
So it does have strategic value.
To someone, certainly, the owner.
To us, huh?
We bought it. We did pay for it.
Just don't have to return title to it.
You just don't own it. You bought it.
Well, I think that's an awfully blightstated...
They own it, they own it. They don't have to return it.
We do own it, man.
Yeah, I suspect.
Well, just let us know, and we'll put you back on the agenda or...
And you may even want to note in your minutes that Neil said he expects or hopes there'll be some response to DOT by August 1. And I think that'll possibly culminate where you have now.
Yeah, say what now?
DOT is responding to him.
Yeah, but we have to respond to DOT.
In theory.
No, in actuality, they're requesting it.
But that doesn't mean it's responding.
If you don't, then you're gonna lose the opportunity.
That's something different.
Listen, you're my lawyer.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, fair.
I'm not trying to be fair, I'm trying to be legal.
Thank you. No, I'm always legal.
Okay.
Well, this is yours.
Thank you very much. Do you want to call it for you?
If you want to call it for us, that would be better. Yeah.
Superb, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right, we'll get back to you.
Okay, sounds great. All right, the next item.
Okay, yeah. Good seeing you. Thanks, Doug. Do you think of the team?
Yes. Yes.
But you know, what can you respond to this time? Other than you suspect you might have something?
Well, you and I were interested.
We're interested in the...
And so therefore, we're exploring all this, and we're not going to give our...
I can vastly understand that if you want to be released. You know a lot more about it.
Right, and so maybe we'll read a letter or something.
And the problem, see, what you gotta watch out is that I don't know what the history was here. Obviously, they expended money. The monies were expended, that they probably have some consideration in this transaction. And it becomes a question of what Neil was alluding to about appraisals or... You know, you could be placed in an awkward position if you wanted. In terms of evaluation.
But what I thought to Allen for an hour, and he didn't know anything about this, so he started going through it with me. "Oh, my, this land, suspected, didn't know, was sold two or three times without a release."
Oh, no doubt.
And therefore, the town of Goshen should have had an opportunity to buy this land back when.
Absolutely.
And so that, and so he said, "Doug, I'm not your lawyer, but you better think through this."
Absolutely.
Okay? That's what I said to them tonight. "I want to know what strategic value. We missed it the first time. We may not miss it this time." And even though you're refinancing to take equity out for some other reason or something like that...
That's not happening.
Yeah, so the strategic interest would be your determination.
Yes.
But if you did nothing, if you did nothing, then potentially, yeah, but the DOT could waive or relinquish a release.
Yeah.
Okay? Now, that's your concern, if you want to call that, as far as any access or interest.
Okay.
Yeah, but a lot of these, I'm telling you, these land speculators were buying stuff up for pennies. And then they would hold up surrounding property owners. I'm not sure this is one of them. You know, they played monopoly, and they were getting access to some of these landlocked parcels. And just flipped and flipped and flipped. And now suddenly, somebody finally caught it, bank-ized and refinanced.
Sure. Well, the title company.
Yeah.
Because they're not gonna give it...
They refuse to...
They're not gonna insure it. And I don't blame them.
I agree, I find it interesting. But see, that's how valuable these... Think about this. Neil said, "I can't believe the client, that won't ever change." Took it with this exception.
Absolutely.
Think about that. They're like, "I'll take it, I don't care how bad the title is. I want it. I'm tied, cured of all. Releases, waivers, sign off and so..." That's probably what happened here. And I'll bet you dollars to donuts that the big parcel is landlocked.
I agree, that's exactly...
Okay, we'll go back to, so if he's been using that as his entrance to the bigger property for...
And basically, see, there's no adverse possession against the municipality. Arguably, if there was some interest in the state on down, they could never lose that interest. Or could he gain any further rights? Go ahead. Rather interesting.
What I don't totally understand at this point is, this letter, May 18, again, is saying, "Are you interested in the DOT? Are you interested in ordering this property?" We as group, I think, are saying, "Yes."
But think what that letter is. That letter is a CYA to a state official in his department. He's like, "Oh, my God, we screwed this up who knows how many times. We're now gonna take our... We only want to make a decision now. Where is this property? Goshen, right to Goshen. Get them to sign off. We can sign off, everybody's happy, go away." If I was CYA, whether you have any interest or not.
Right.
And all of a sudden, we had to...
Something totally different.
So therefore, now, it presents a problem for a lot of other people.
Potentially, absolutely right.
And presents, possibly presents, an opportunity.
Most definitely. This is what I said to you last time. Because I'm telling you, I know where this property is. And this is a very valuable piece of property, depending upon what Goshen wants to do in the future. You could use it as a road out to Gibson Road. You could break up...
If we get into your session, there's some things I want to talk about.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it's a fascinating piece of property.
It is, but the title company would be on the hook. The previous title company...
Somebody would.
Somebody would, so I'm not really...
Yeah, right. Which would render this guy whole.
Whole, and make him whole.
Neil said someone in this whole chain didn't accept it with that...
The last guy.
Exclusion from the title insurance.
Yeah, see, attorneys refer to it as an exception. Except, it's not ACC, it's E-X-E-P-T. It's an exception to the title. So they accepted it with that exception.
Right.
Okay, meaning they're like, "I'll take it. I don't care what the problem is, I want." That's what I heard.
And now it potentially could blow up in his face.
Right, because he doesn't... The title insurance if that happens...
That's right, that's right. He would not have insurance.
Then right now, the title...
Never refinance.
Okay. Well, I think what we'll do in terms of...
We're talking about that.
Let's do this. We can continue as public hearing number two.
Okay.
I'll put that on again for Thursday. So the next... So we'll get you on here very short. We're gonna whisper these other things. You had a special planning permit, we've talked about that. Joel, at our last meeting, discussed this or suggested to us that we do some training regarding the New York State Open Meeting Law with the village. And so I said, "Well, okay, we'll think about it, talk about it." And I'm putting it on the agenda tonight. My position is, and I don't know where the board is, is that I don't think we need that. I've been with the same board for, what, our sixth year. We have an attorney at each one of our boards, Planning Board, ZBA, and this board, and Environmental Review Board, because we've got the attorney's chair of that. Whenever I have a question, I always call Dennis. And/or if he sees somebody on my agenda when I fax it to him in advance, he will call me if he has a suggestion. So I don't think, unless the board here has energy to want to work on something like this and do more training with the village, I don't particularly see need for it.
Although, respect, I don't think there's a need at this level. I think what Joel was getting at, he liked to see the village. It'd be a little bit more...
Yes, we did.
But whether we're supposed to be bootstrapping...
Right. We adhere to all the open meeting laws. We're very, very conscious of that.
To the potential...
To the letter, I mean, to... So it doesn't look right.
Okay, so anyway, I guess then we're saying to Joel, and I'll share that with him, that we feel we're comfortable with ours. And he did bring up Robert Knoll, who that evening had his program for the roads. And he's bringing it to the job. He said, "Well, I don't..." Because Joel asked for it. "Well, I don't know if I can give you this without first talking to the board about it." Which was a pretty good thought. He was trying to find out what he could or could not do. So I have no problem with that. The next one is, on Tuesday, I did take over the community development block grant. I took it to the county regarding the Goshen food pantry. It was submitted. I would like to go on the record as thanking Bill Standish, because I wasn't here this week, last week. Bill Standish and Barbara Zawloski and John Strobel.
No, Strobel.
Those three put it together. You know, it was a lot of work putting one of these together. So they put it together, and it's done. Now, it got signed and stamped in. I asked George to be in position to comment on the triple A purchase.
Yeah, I can comment on that as soon as I find my shoe.
Okay.
So I looked through a couple of catalogs that I have in reference to different layers. Eight is, they also are... The one that's most used in places such as what we're talking about is a Phelps model, and it's called the On-Site. Price of it, I got two different prices. And I think there's a case or something that comes along with it, which probably is probably better to have than the rest having out there. And with the case, I believe, it's $1,292.99. So I don't know what the amount was. Does that fit within the amount?
He... We were going to... His pay was $2,500, and he said he would donate that. So this would probably buy two of them.
Yeah, $200, yeah. $2,600.
Right, one for a McHale Hall and one for the highway department.
Right. So this seems to be the type of one that is used. And when I called a couple of these places, both of the people that I spoke to said, "This is the one that's used." Because you see, there's different priorities. Like this one is in the ambulance, which is a different model. It's a more... Yeah, right. This is the one that's used. For the bump, it's very easy to use. Follow the directions. It's used in schools, in the municipal buildings, and so on and so forth.
Is that the train?
No.
Well, it is, but it...
I'd recommend it.
It should be trained.
You'd be disregulating everybody, like, "What did you say to me?"
Don't do the tapes, Phil.
That's what I was thinking.
But once you get the pads in the proper position...
Yeah.
But once you get, once you get the pads in the proper position, it'll only fire if it's necessary. It won't, there are certain, like, beats and stuff like that, that do not take a call for a shock, so therefore, it will not shock them.
Construction, we have to have it, my boss had it, I have to say, you have to use it. We, we got bad office street, but you have no training, it's like, only with these two tools.
But like what we do for workplace violence, check in, check out, that type of thing, it doesn't take a lot of, but there should be some training.
Well, I think this is, what I had in mind, George, between you and Jennifer upstairs, that you would familiarize us all.
Yeah.
You know, us to do a lot of things, and by our own.
Right.
Well, I'm going to go ahead and put that on for Thursday night, then Dennis, authorization, we'd buy two of these through a resolution.
Yeah.
Okay?
I want to verify the prices.
Sure.
I got it.
Never mind, too, so we get discount.
Yeah. This supposedly is a discounted price. Oh, okay, I'm not lying today. But I was thinking along the same way, who could I get to donate?
All right, the next one is, just for the information. Since they've been our provider, Workless Comp, they've come through every year to give a free assessment, and this year, you can see, I just put the, I got the letter late today, and under procedures, one said the town should consider establishing a safety committee for the purpose of removing employees' injuries, so we have done that in our latest Workless Violence Plan that Robert put together, so that one's already done, and then the police department, well, we'll just have to look at all these things up, but anyway, we only had two items this time, just for your information, we'll be proceeding on following up on these items with your respective group, because I think the good auditor spent all day here, and that's it, that's pretty good. The next item is, today we got another request, Houston Filming, I have not even read the letter, the old Proud City production, and looking down at the end, we're going to shoot these spots on June 21, and let me see, where are the spots, anybody read this letter?
Okay. They want a town hall, and they want a cop car. Walkout, Goshen.
Okay, well, anyway, I'll.
They also looking for an ice cream shop.
Okay, that's the village probably there.
They were tied up for what, four hours, in front of the building, in the police car. There were one of you guys in the area that said of the dorm and cost of transporting a special picture vehicle from down here.
Okay, what I see here is, then I think we can meet the needs of the police car and the town hall, but they're going to have to probably go to the village for friendly, or they want to go to the ice cream place. What do you think, do we have any to have? Oh, I guess we'd steward.
The store actually picked up, they were.
Not the village. Village, yeah, okay, anyway, I'm going to have Val work on this with him, but you know, we'll still have time, we'll work, yeah, unless we have a real problem with it.
And then they got to have their proper insurance.
All those things, yeah.
Worth some dollars to the cops.
Wait, 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 you, I can have a turn on the steps, this is for an ad. This is, in production, we have been hit to produce a small TV ad campaign for a media com. Who's media com?
Media com is.
The cable, phone, and internet service provider.
Six largest cable TV provider in the country.
Okay, so it's a private, yeah, asking us, like, use a police car, and this whole stuff. Are you making ads in time, or a private company?
Well, the public company, it's an advertising.
Well, I'm saying they're shooting ads in time, and they want to use our police cars to, that's unusual, don't you think?
Well, I think, well, I think, I'm making money.
In my basement?
Well, that's what I'm telling you.
They want to use our town hall to take pictures of it, but what I'm saying is, to assist them in their ads.
I, I, I would pay for that, but.
I think that's thoughtful.
Well, I thought, normally, that's. I don't see anything about that. All I say is, all I see in this letter is, we would like to shoot an ad to your suppliers with a car at your town hall, certainty, how many employees do you want?
I've got a couple, I think, that'll kill a few out there.
I, I, I thought I was reading it right.
Let me find out what Val can extract from in between now and Thursday night, relative to, who was in Goshen?
We don't give anything.
All right, so, Neil, I'll put that on Thursday, well, we'll try to get some, because again, it came in about, well, when you were in the office at 5:15, it seemed that came in my desk.
It's written through the back of it, I'm like, okay, do I work for these people?
Okay, is anybody else having for the regular section? Would someone like to make a motion, we adjourn the meeting and go into executive session to discuss questions in the aspect regarding New York farms, AKA here at the state, through dispute with the arbitration status of the village, alimony litigation status, time order cable franchise, contract renewal status, estate, surcharge area litigation, and notice of plain sewer line blockage. All pay, say aye?
Aye.
Ocean care. By the way, Joel, we did discuss the, I am for tonight, the open means law training, and we drew the conclusion that we, the town, we don't think we need it, we began together as a unit now our sixth year, we have an attorney at each meeting, we, I did hear what you said relative to Broderick, and he was confused, so he asked a question, but in terms of, it was a good question, and so we think that we're in pretty good shape, and we also passed the test from the Times Hill Record a couple of years ago, when they were searching out individual communities, and how well they were doing on the year, so, but anyway, I'm glad you brought it up.
As I said, my issue is less with this board, and certainly not with Rob, but with the town in general, with its multiplicity of boards and staff, to get everybody on the same page, and it would be a nice opportunity to open up to the village and get all municipal government community at one session, but I certainly understand if you don't want to do it.
Okay.
It's just an idea.
Well, I'm glad to be informed.
But thank you for considering it.
Your town too.
Okay.